Did you get my message?
I call this meeting to order. May the Supreme Legislature grant that we be worthy of our power and responsibility, that we deliberate and achieve with wisdom and understanding, recognizing the rights of all of our citizens with full regard for the dignity and justness of the individual. Those attending tonight's meeting should be aware that the meeting is being audio and video recorded by HCTV and audio recorded by WHAV and the Eagle Tribune. Any audience members who wish to record any part of the meeting must inform the Council President, who will announce the recording. This is to comply with the Massachusetts wiretap statute. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Counselor McGonigal, did you read the minutes from the previous meeting?
I did, Mr. President. Found them to be in order and recommend they be placed on file.
Second. And there's a motion by Counsel McGonigal and a second from Counsel Masek. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. And, Mr. Vice President, will you do the honors for tonight's meeting?
I will, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, first item.
Tag days, Haber High School rest login boosters, June 21st, 22nd, 23rd.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Bevalacqua and a second from Counsel Barrett. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Next item.
Drain layer license for 2019, Shawn Savage. This is a renewal.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Masek and a second from Counsel Jordan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Next item.
Pool table renewals, Smith's Tavern, 124 Essex Street, One Table.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Masek and a second from Counsel Barrett. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Next item.
Buy and sell secondhand articles, renewals, Common Ground Thrift Store, 8 White Street and Doris's Attic, 121B Lafayette Square.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Bevalacqua and a second from Counsel Jordan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Next item.
Buy and sell secondhand clothing, renewal, Common Ground Thrift Store.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Masek and a second from Counsel Jordan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Next item.
Ordinance, this should be placed on file for 10 days. Ordinance regarding parking, add handicap parking, 74 Pecker Street, file 10 days.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Masek and a second from Counsel Jordan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Next item.
Communication from Counsel President Mitchison requesting to introduce Jack Gardner to provide status update on the HP3 program.
Jack?
Well, thank you for the opportunity to join you guys again.
Yeah, your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Jack Gardner. He live at 125 North Lee Street in Alexandria, Virginia.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Now, I met, I came in, it's been 45 or 6 months or so, and I gave you initial update on the HP3, the Haber Public Power Partnership Program. And I'd like to give you an update. In his review, though, the goal is, how do you build a systemic infrastructure that facilitates every public school student in Haber all making it to a living wage job? And we've had about 7, 8 months of fairly constant effort. And as review, again, the concept was, if that's the goal, how do you go into the middle schools and high schools and make sure the students and parents understand the range of opportunities? And how do you assess what you might be good at? How to identify, you know, a career field you want to go into and develop a plan to get there? And then also, a second component was development of a mentor program. Third was transportation augmentation program, to make sure that transportation is not an obstacle to somebody succeeding. Next component was developing website that captured all this information. And then the last is, is once a year to get the kind of combined group together and assess, how are we doing? Is there some other obstacle in addition to maybe mentors or transportation that is significant that needs to be overcome by some collective effort? And in the last 3, 4 months, we've expanded the partnership to about 50 organizations, individuals. We established a series of work groups that focused on those 3 areas. You know, the briefings to students and parents, the mentor program, and transportation augmentation program. And through kind of iterative process, we come up with, and the documents I gave you show kind of where we are on all 3 of those. And on the student and parent briefing, what it's kind of condensed down to is to, you know, once a year, starting in this next academic year, they go into one day in each one of the middle school schools and brief all the students. And that briefing will include, you know, an overview of kind of what's on the front page, but also will bring in fairly recent graduates that are examples of, you know, a doctor, lawyer, H-back repair, and so forth. And the goal there is to get students in middle school to start thinking about what their interests are and recognize their opportunities. And also to convince, and also to do briefings with their parents, the evening and weekends, and then at other venues in the city to capture the parents that don't make it to the school. And the intent with the parents in middle school is to convince them that there are opportunities, that their kids don't necessarily need to college if they want to get a great job. There are a range of opportunities that may or may not include college. And that's the middle school. For the high school, we settled on doing a session with the freshman, each freshman year, kind of a similar format. We'll brief him on, you know, those range of, here are career fields in the U.S., here are occupations as career fields, here are jobs that pay well in those fields, here's how you assess what your interest and skills would be and identify field, career field, and how you develop a plan. On the high school level, it's less informed and more trying to help them start to make an informed decision. And the same thing with the parents. Do a couple sessions with the parents in the schools, and then outside of school, track down that percent of parents you just can't get to school. And so that's, the copy in there kind of highlights where we are in that program. On the mentor program, it's condensed down to, the goal is, this fall, to stand up a mentor office. We'll have a, you know, full-time mentor, program manager, and then a kind of recurring 12-month maricor volunteer. And to meet a range of requirements across the community. And talking to the school system and a few others, you know, there are 4 or 5 scenarios we can think of that would make sense. One is, I'm in school, I want to be an H-back repair, but I know nothing about it, so your mentor would be someone in that field that, for some specified period of time, could give you some exposure to it. Another may be, I just need a lot of help. My mom or dad are working 2 jobs, I don't have a lot of assistance, so I get a mentor, and the mentor is with me through some milestone. It could be a number of years, could be through high school, could be till I get a job. Another one is, in early school, grade school to middle school, if you start identifying folks that have significant numbers of absences, you assign a mentor. And mentor schools, how do you identify what's the reason? And there's 3 or 4 other categories, but that's the second one. The sheet in there kind of summarizes where we are in the mentor program. The third one is transportation augmentation. You know, the goal is to eliminate transportation as a, as an obstacle. And we've kind of settled on is, a program to provide prepaid cards to cover very specific transportation requirements. It may be, I can get the public transportation, or I can get public transportation, but I can't get there, and frame where it ends to the site, where the training, the job is, or some others. And working with the school system, the employer, and social organizations will verify, under certain conditions, and give the individual the, you know, the card that covers the transportation. And then the next is the website, and the top page on the, handle I gave you is, current version, we just completed the first version about 2 weeks ago. We're running by a number of folks now to get some feedback. It essentially captures the same information, we'll present in the briefings. You know, here, here's how the U.S. defines career fields and the state of Massachusetts. Here are jobs inside those career fields. Here's how you find the jobs in a, you know, 3 or 4 hour radius. And then here are some tools to help you do an assessment of what your skills are, your interests are, how to develop a plan, and answer some of the community resources. And we've also talked with, the next version that we'd like to bring out in the fall would provide some means of, once you leave school, to be able to stay connected in. And we're not sure whether that'll be email or some other social media link, but the goal would be, as someone graduates, to stay linked in the process. And ideally, as they succeed, we bring them back to be mentors and to participate. Or if they, if they just didn't make it, they took a path that didn't work, they can go back in the process and get assistance. And we've also talked to some of the things that came out of the hackathon, potentially embedding in the maybe version 2 or 3. Next thing's funding. You know, most of my energy now is on funding, you know, basically to fund the transportation program and the mentor program. Both combined are not that expensive. We think the payoff is pretty significant for a fairly limited amount of funds. And the goal for both of these, especially the mentors, is not to do it for a year or 2. The goal is to make kind of an enduring institution that survives a lengthy period. So we're trying to get long-term funding that'll, that'll cover that through the duration of, you know, decade or so. And not surprisingly, getting money's not, not the easiest thing in the world. Timeline we're on, the website's up now. The goal is to get feedback over the next 30 days and make the first set of adjustments. The briefs to the middle schools and the high schools will start this coming fall semester. The superintendent, you know, agrees with the concept. We have a meeting with the principals of the middle schools and high school next Tuesday to kind of talk through implementation, because for them, you know, our goal is to do this without dramatically disrupting their schedule, which is already pretty busy. The mentor and transportation, based on funding, the goal is to have those stood up in the August timeframe before we start the briefings to the students and parents next fall semester. And last thing, assessment. We think the goal is, within 2 years of April last year, which is kind of when we started this for real, is to show measurable increase in the number of Haber High School students that make a living wage jobs. And to get that, because it's not an existing data point, you got to put together a couple different pieces of information. But the longer-term goal is, and this, this chart, somebody got to show this, it shows the income distribution across the city. We'd like to be able, in say, 5 years, 7 years, show where we've moved 3 or 4 of those bars on the left-hand side toward the middle. And if we can do that, then it's, it's measurable, it had an impact on getting people into true living wage jobs.
I think there were 20 candidates running for Democratic president that are trying to, they're saying that they're going to do that, right? They're going to move it in that direction.
I think that's the goal. Wish I could get them to help with some money in the near term, but that's, that's where we are. We'll come back in a few months in an update, because we get into the fall, get into the first surge of briefing. But are there any questions?
Yes, we do have questions. And Counselor Daley O'Brien.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. So, right now, do you have a funding source?
No. We, well, we've got, we've got 2 businesses in the area that have, that have offered to help fund at a unspecified level. We've gone to 5 other entities and given them, for example, I gave them the summary here that outlines the cost of the mentor program, and we're waiting for, should get an answer next month or so. And my goal is to get the funding locked in by late July, so we can start hiring the people in August.
And have you had any interaction with any of the students yet? Middle school or high school?
Some, I, in fact, some that work in the apprentice, in the tech apprenticeship program, helped develop the website, but that's it so far.
Mm-hmm. Because I think it's going to be interesting to see how the kids react to this, that the education in school time does convert to opportunities in a lot of different ways that they don't even know about yet. So that should be very interesting. But I have to tell you, when I hear you talk, I have a brother that retired as an officer from the Green Berets after 22 years, and you just remind me so much of my brother.
No, sir, Jack seems nice.
Unfortunately, these guys know my brother. So, but only, only when he's being very serious and putting something forth, my, my brother talks very much like you, but I think that was all those years, and that does bring back a memory. Anyways, I, I think what you're doing is great, and, you know, if there's anything more that we can do to support you as a city council, I'm sure that everybody would be behind you. I don't, I don't see as not. It's just so important for these kids to realize they have opportunities, and that staying in school and education does convert to those opportunities. And I have to tell you, I have 4 daughters, and only 1 is doing what she went to college for. And that's the chef who went to Whittier of O-Tech.
Yeah.
Yep. The other 3-
She had planned, and she thought through it. That's the way to do it.
No, the other 3 were well-educated and then converted into other professions.
Yeah.
So they, you know, so it's not a dead end, just because you said you were going to do this.
Yeah, I mean, you, you-
Education is education.
Yeah, you got to have the flexibility, you may change your mind at some point. It's, it's just defining what you think you're good at and following a path that's got some structure.
And sometimes you have to change.
Yeah.
We never know. But anyways, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counselor. And Counselor Jordan.
Thank you. Thanks, Jack. Again, I'm very excited about the program, and I also have some questions just regarding the funding. So, it sounds like, yeah, you don't have any funding yet. You've said you get 2 promises or commitments, just unspecified amounts. Looking at, you know, your, your list with the mentor concept, and you have the goal or timeline of February to June, obtain initial funding, what is your thought for what is that initial funding? And I see-
Yeah, for the mentor program, for the full-time program manager, and again, we want to hire at a living wage to be consistent with the program.
Sure.
That cost alone is like 82, 83,000, and then some office material space, and then the maricor, annually, it's about 22, plus or minus. So those combined take that about 116 for the mentor program.
Okay, so your grand total, I see that on one of these pages here, you say estimated annual total is 116. So your goal is to have that 116 in place by July before the program kicks off?
Yeah, the, the goal was to be able to hire the person in August and September. The, the full-time, and then the maricor will probably, because it takes a while to build the position, we'll bring them in maybe next spring or so.
Gotcha. And are, do you, have you established a 501(c)(3) nonprofit?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, I guess, where can, if people are watching tonight and they want to donate, where would they go? Do you have a website and everything?
Yeah, in fact, well, the, the website, it's, that, the hp3.com, which is the top sheet, and it's got a contact form on a contact button, and they can send us any information or suggestions or comments on the website, and also, if they're willing to offer money, would be a great place to do it.
Is there a donate button on there as well?
Uh, no, that we don't have. That's a good idea, though.
Gotcha. Yep.
New with the money raising thing side, and that's-
You want to make it as easy as possible, obviously, if anyone is so inclined. So, well, I appreciate you coming and giving us an update. As Counselor Daley O'Brien said, I think we're all very supportive and excited about where this is going to go. So, thank you, and we'll look forward to hearing from you, maybe again, July, August, just to give us an update where you're at, at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, and Counselor McGonigal.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Jack, for coming in with the update. And from the start, this was a big endeavor, and this was, you know, there wasn't really a roadmap, and you've started a roadmap and has started to come together. It looks like the funding is, is something that's very important, and the timeline is, is here. It's just about that you're, you're looking to get that in place, so hopefully, that will materialize. Have you talked to the school committee and the school department about what part of this do they want to be part of?
Not the school committee. I've talked to superintendent a number of times, and a number of other folks in the school system, and their, the head of their apprenticeship program is kind of our point of contact, but I've not talked with the school committee specifically.
Now, you know, and I'm not, I would think that that might be a good resource, and as much as we work in the community and we try to use our collective imagination to find funding wherever we can, they might be a good resource, too. I mean, it would be something that maybe they could put into their budget as a request item to maybe fund a part of this. And I don't know if that's possible, but I, I think it's worth a question. And again, maybe through, have you talked to the mayor's office, gone through there?
Yeah, not second on funding on other issues. Allison is, was kind of on our strength, was kind of the point for the, for the mayor's office.
Okay. And so that seems like, I guess that's where I would go. I would definitely try to get on their docket. It's not difficult to do. And again, there are a lot of smart people on that committee that are very committed to, to the children as well, so I think you'd find a lot of allies there. And, you know, maybe just that back and forth would create some, some other ideas on funding or how to deliver this into the school system and just be a point of reference for you.
Okay, thank you.
And then lastly, Counsel O'Brien's brother is a really nice guy.
That's good.
I'm still a little afraid of him, too, so I want to clear that up. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counselor, and Counsel Barrett.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Gardner, for being here again. And it sounds very promising. On your milestones, you're going to get the mentor training program finalized. How's that going? Because that's, must be, that's obviously, you know, the thrust of the-
Yeah, we've run a couple organizations that, and what we're ultimately do is just buy one that's kind of off the shelf. You know, the components are, we need to, you know, recruit certain, you know, and it's a range of diverse mentors in terms of skills and demographics. And then also do a background check and then have a training program. And the program manager will run the training program. We're looking at en masse mentor partnering is one here in Boston, but there's a couple organizations that have kind of off-the-shelf packages you can buy from, and they provide kind of the basic skills, and you have to tailor it to the local community.
To what you're, you're trying to accomplish. Now, when you get that set up, that final mentoring program guideline or something, you'll go to local businesses and local mentors or-
Yeah, like, you know, it's, it's take a broad swath. We've, you know, the organization we've talked to, we've got a lot, you know, at least 100 volunteers that want to go into the schools and, and bring young people in the schools that are recent graduates, that are, you know, lawyers or plumbers, whatever. The same organizations will offer up mentors. The tough thing is, it's, we haven't made it specific to where people have to commit. But it'll take a fairly substantial campaign to get, we look at from businesses to college students to some high school peer mentors, to high schools, to middle school, and to retirees. You know, there's a range of about 4 or 5 possible groups.
So you don't think you'll have an issue, you don't, you won't have an issue kind of finding the mentors?
No, I, I think-
That'll be the easier part compared to the fundraising.
Yeah, I think, I think we've had, anecdotally, we've had enough response where we think that, you know, part of it is we don't know what the demand will be. I think the hard ones will be, the near-term, short-term ones will be pretty easy, the longer-term, where Jack needs help for 4 or 5 years.
Yeah.
It's more immersive, maybe more difficult.
Yeah.
But we think that, just based on what the response we received from different organizations, the numbers appear to be there.
That's good. Well, that's great, and thank you. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Counselor, and Counsel Masek.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jack, I want to thank you, and I agree with all my colleagues in, in supporting you 100%. I, I just wanted to comment that the one thing that you said that really impressed me and rang very loudly to me tonight was that you look at the kids individually and you try to tailor something for them that works. Rather than having one size fits all in the program, it, it's going to be uniquely handled so that you're doing the best you can for the children. And I think that's so important and would be so helpful, I think, for certain kids to get on the right path and to have a successful career in life. So, I, I would hate to see this die on the vine. Come back to us if we could be of any help to get your message out or whatever. Are you, are you going to be in the area for a while?
I, I, I'm here about 2 work weeks a month. I live in Virginia, but I come up about 10 workdays a month. And our goal is, you know, I have a small organization, it's got a small board. Our goal was, at a minimum, I want to do this here for at least 5 years. You know, we think it'll take 2 or 3 to get institutionalized, and, but make it an enduring process, so I'll be for next-
It's a unique and a, and a great concept, and, you know, I, I know that all of us would like to help in any way possible. I think the suggestion of going to the school committee and, and also maybe getting a, a meeting right with the mayor. You happen to go right through, through June, that's our, our budgeting time, and, and there may even be some, some things that we can do, or if not us, maybe some of our local businesses that have some office space. You know, you may not get money to rent office space because you may not need it, maybe somebody can just offer you some space. I think we may even have some space in this building. There are some, some, there's some red tape that would need to be cleared in order to just donate it, but, you know, maybe we can figure that out. So, whatever we can do to help, we're here for you.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thanks, Jack.
Thank you, Counselor, and Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jack, have you explored grant opportunities for funding?
Yeah, we've looked at, at federal and some state. Part of the challenge is, and at first I thought there were a couple of federal ones that would have worked, but they're, most of it are even marginally relevant or tied to STEM apprenticeships, and we couldn't find one that met, this is a broader.
Yeah.
And so in the end, short answer, haven't found any yet that-
What about private foundations?
Uh, we've gone to, gone to 3. 2 of them look promising, and we're waiting for a response. You know, I had an initial conversation, in fact, on Thursday morning, I meet with them again. And the first conversation was kind of an overview, and then I gave them, you know, summary like the mentor program here and kind of talking through it. We went to a couple of big corporations, went to Raytheon, a few others, and waiting for a response from them.
Okay. I agree with my colleagues who mentioned, this is a great program, and I'd hate to see it die at the vine. If there is anything more we can do, like they said, let us know. But I really think funding's going to probably come, the bulk of your funding is going to come from either grant opportunities or private foundations, at least at the onset. I don't think we're going to give you enough. If we could get an appropriation in the budget this year, I don't think it would be for 116,000, but I know every bit helps, and we certainly would try. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. General, you need an army. We got to help you. We have to help you. And are you having a steering committee meeting this week or next week?
No, we're, the next one, we're looking at like the, the last week of June or the 2nd week of July.
Okay.
And by then, we're hope to have one, I hope to have an answer from a couple of organizations that look like they're, they're willing to fund.
And a lot of the members on the steering committee are from, they're local. You need help from the local group to make this work, so we have to step up.
Okay.
I'm on your steering committee, and I'm, I'm yelling at myself right now. So, we're gonna, we're gonna help you. You have that steering committee meeting, and people have to step up, because this is too good of a program, and I think the message from my colleagues tonight is, we can see you need help, and we appreciate what you've done.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for talking.
Thank you. And, Madam Clerk, next item.
Communication from Counsel President Mitchison wishing to initiate FY '20 budgeting process with thorough review of long-term capital improvement plan and the city's near and long-term finances, including session with city finance consultant Cinder McNerny to set the stage for budget review.
Counselor Mitchison.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this is going to be very short. We usually start off budgeting with an overview session. I don't know if we've done it every year, but, but we do it on a normal basis. And this year, what I'd like to do, and again, we, we've done some of this in the past. First, I want to, through the mayor, invite Cinder McNerny, who's our finance consultant. She has been for 20 years, and she can give us a baseline of where we stand today in finances. How solid are they? And in the future?
And so that'll help us, that'll be a baseline that we can start our budgeting from, is to have a pretty solid understanding of our finances, near-term and long-term. And then the second piece, which we seem to talk about often here, and, and there has been a lot of positive action from the mayor's office and the city council when it comes to capital improvements. I, I think that seeing the big picture upfront, you know, day one of budgeting will give us a frame of reference for how big, you know, the mountain is that we have to climb when we're looking at the current budget. So both of these recommendations are, are made for that reason, right? To give us that longer-term perspective as we're reviewing the budget. So I would make a recommendation to send a letter to the mayor with that request.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Mitchison, second by Counselor Barrett. Anything else, Counselor? Are we good?
Well, one last thing that I'd like to throw in there.
Can I just make a suggestion?
Yes.
I think to make your request a little more powerful.
Yes.
We should do a voice vote that we all agree.
Let's do a voice.
Yes, I think we should.
Yes.
Because we, I'm sure we do agree.
Counselor Mitchison.
Yeah, the only other area that would be, I, I think, very valuable for us is to see performance data and how well we're doing. Now, you know, the mayor had put some performance parameters in last year's budget, and so it'll be interesting to see what those values are, and if that will give us any indicators of where we need to put money. So my, my motion stands.
Thank you, Counselor Mitchison. I think it's a great idea. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Counselor Bevelacqua.
Yes.
Counselor Barrett.
Yes.
Counselor Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Mason.
Yes.
Counselor Daley O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor Mitchison.
Yes.
President Sullivan.
Yes.
Eight yeas, one nay, zero nays, one absent.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Communication from Council President Mitchison canceling the city council meeting scheduled for May twenty eighth, twenty nineteen, at seven P. M. in the Theodore Pelosi Junior City Council Chambers.
And is there a motion?
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion by Counselor McGonigal, and a second from Counselor Daley O'Brien. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Sullivan.
Yes.
Counselor Bevelacqua. Counselor Barrett.
Yes.
Counselor Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Mason.
Yes.
Counselor Daley O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
President Mitchison.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays, one absent.
And that passes. Next item.
Communication from Counselor Bevelacqua requesting to introduce Keith Gopsel, Commander VFW Lorraine Post Twenty Nine to discuss upcoming VFW's first responders banquet on May twenty third, twenty nineteen.
Counselor Bevelacqua.
Thank you, and thank you to the members of the council for allowing this item. The veterans have been doing a tremendous amount to increase the awareness of veterans in the city. They've also been reaching out to other organizations in the city, recognizing those that support one another, provide for public safety and provide for the betterment of our city. And I thought this was an excellent opportunity for Keith, as commander of the VFW post, to come before the city council and to communicate to the city at large the opportunity that we have the support, what I think is a great idea, which is a first responders banquet. So the commander is here, and I could ask him to provide more detail about the program, which he has coming up on May twenty three. Welcome.
Your name and address for the record.
Keith Gopsel, forty-one Lincoln Ave., here in Haverhill.
Welcome.
Thank you. The VFW was founded over a hundred years ago to support the veterans returning from war, and it quickly morphed into also supporting the active-duty members that have left their farms and their jobs, protecting them here at home. And over the course of the past hundred years, it's grown to a lot of different entities to include interacting with the local communities. Every year, annually, the VFW does a first responder award on a local basis with EMS, police, and firefighters. And those get set up, sent up to the state level for a state-level award. Unfortunately, it doesn't go to national level, but we had a couple entries this year for the first time in a long time, and I thought it'd just be fitting that we round this out with banquet dinner to thank not only the awardees that were submitted, but everyone that is a first responder here in the community. So we spoke with the fire chief and the police chief. They're on board a hundred percent. We reached out to good folks at DeBurroughs Banquet Hall, picked a date, picked a menu, and here we are, almost three weeks out, a little over three weeks out. Tickets are available, they're only forty dollars. Banquet begins at six o'clock with a cocktail reception. Dinner starts at seven. Awards to be given out afterwards. And that's about it right now.
Sounds like a worthy cause. And by the way, thanks for setting up the large screen display for us as well. Counselor Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Keith, if somebody wanted to buy tickets, do they call the VFW? They call you? Do they, is there a website or?
You can send a check made out to the VFW, Lorraine Post Twenty Nine.
Okay.
Memo at First Responder Banquet, send it to our address at five seventy-six Primrose Street.
Right.
And we'll return tickets to you.
Okay, great. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Sorry.
Oh, no, please.
Tickets have to be bought before the Friday prior, which I believe is the seventeenth of May.
Okay, that's-
That's the cutoff date.
Great.
Got it.
We'll be there.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Counselor McGonigal.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Keith, for arranging this, and I look forward to supporting it also. Keith has sent a letter to the Veterans Alliance, and we are gonna send that out. But I think that that's something that we would like to do, to get in and support you, supporting people who really contribute quite a lot to our community. So I think it's a great use of resources to be able to give back. So thank you for coming, and thanks for the idea, whoever came up with it. I think it's very important. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. It is a, a very good idea, and I'm in. Counselor Bevelacqua for the wrap-up.
Thank you. And again, thank you to the councils for their support of this program. One thing that Keith didn't mention, there's also an opportunity for businesses and individuals to be sponsors of the program. And we've arranged for some businesses already to make sponsorship donations, so you can be a sponsor. And again, the information's available, and I hope we're able to support this. And thank you again, and congratulations to the veterans organizations, because they're all working together to continue to help those in Haverhill that help us. So thank you, and we'll see you then.
There was one other thing if I may mention.
Yes.
We will have a announcement made that night, so special announcement, and you probably will want to be there for it.
Ooh, I like the tees.
Yeah, this is, wow.
Yeah. I like Fords. Just kidding, just kidding.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And Madam Clerk, next item.
By the way, I'm not sure, but Keith may have some flyers.
I only have the one.
Can you give one to the clerk, and she can copy it and send it to us? Thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Keith.
And Madam Clerk, next item.
Communication from Counselor Bevelacqua requesting a discussion to introduce an established company to discuss Haverhill's interest in exploring a municipal fiber to the home network.
Counselor Bevelacqua.
Thank you. As you know, the city has been discussing opportunities for fiber optics in the city as an alternative to what we now have, as well as to try to increase competition, to provide better service to our city relative to internet and broadband. This is another company that has approached the city. The name of the company, you'll meet him in a second. Chris Lynch is the Director of Business Development for a company called Matrix Design Group. They're out of, they're local, but the parent company is Millennium Communications out of New Jersey. They've been in business for over twenty-two years. I'd like to introduce Chris Lynch to come forward, make a brief presentation, and then, as we did with the prior company, Mr. President, I'd like to, I'll make a motion to refer this to the Planning and Development Committee for a much more detailed discussion.
Thank you.
So thank you, and welcome.
And your name and address for the record.
My name is Chris Lynch, and I'm out of Worcester, Mass. The company is Matrix Design Group, and they're based out of East Hanover, New Jersey. I'm not sure what we're gonna do with the presentation, because I'm not sure if anybody-
Actually, there's a clicker there. If Counselor McGonigal can maybe do the clicking for you.
Kenny, you want to click?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor.
I did have a handout, and at first, I'd like to thank the council for your time and attention tonight, especially Counselor Bevelacqua for arranging to be on the agenda. Matrix Design Group and Millennium Communications have the same ownership. It's a privately-held company. Matrix Design Group does the engineering, and Millennium Communications does the installation and electronics, so we can do the design and build of any fiber project, or, as we like to say, take any fiber project from concept to completion. We've been in business for over twenty-two years. We were founded specifically to do fiber optic networks. Among some of the projects that we've done, we've built thousands of miles of fiber network, then thousands of projects, and we've built fiber-to-the-home networks in ten New England towns now, nine in Vermont, one in Massachusetts, the town of Leverett. We're in the process of building four more in Vermont for Burlington Telecom and its expansion, and we're doing the town of Petersham, Massachusetts in a public-private partnership, where we're paying to build the network. Also, you can see some of the projects that we've done over the years. I highlighted a couple of those in different colors. AT&amp;T, Verizon, and Level Three, which is now part of CenturyLink, are our three largest billing customers. They also happen to be the three largest internet companies in the United States, and they choose to do business with us, which I think speaks, you know, loudly to our competence. Also, on the bottom in blue, you have Bell Labs. Years and years and years ago, we might have actually built the very first residential broadband network in the United States. Bell Labs was doing a project with Microsoft for a product that they had called At Home, and we had to connect the campus to the people's houses, the scientists and the researchers. And it might have been, like I said, the first, you know, fiber broadband network in the world, or at least the United States. We also did Rutgers University, connected all of their campuses in New Jersey via fiber. Public service of New Jersey is to New Jersey what national grid is to Massachusetts. And over the past two or three years, we've built two multimillion-dollar smart grids for them. And also Homeland Security, we built a network operations center for them, which is mission-critical twenty-four-seven. So just an example of all the different type of fiber projects that we have experienced. And, and again, this is just to kind of give our background, so kind of let you know that we do know what we're talking about. What goes into a fiber build? Again, I want to make sure, just to give an overview. I want to make sure, be careful not to skip over any steps, just to want, make sure people understand what's involved. Now, there's a lot of things, a lot of engineering work that actually goes into the, you know, before you get to the first step, which is actually getting the right to put your fiber on utility companies' poles. It's a very involved process, and it's an expensive process. Once you have the license to attach to the pole, then you're able to build the fiber network that goes on the street. Once that's up, you're able to connect either to the house or to the business, a fiber drop. And then, once that's there, you have to have services that people are interested in purchasing in order to make the whole thing viable. And then on top of everything else, you have to maintain that network. So there's a lot that goes into this. I want to make sure that people are aware of it. As far as the city is concerned, you have basically a little over three hundred and fifty miles of road. When you look at a fiber build, there's really two main components. The amount of fiber that you're building, the number of road miles, and the number of homes and businesses that you'd be connecting to. So Haverhill has a little over three hundred and fifty miles, like I said, and a little over twenty-two thousand residential units. The number of miles came from the engineering department. The number of residential units came from the assessor's office. This does not include the municipal buildings or any businesses or industrial parks, so it doesn't include Ward Hill or anything. Although those numbers are included in the three hundred and fifty miles of road, there's no way to separate them out. So just to give you an idea of what would be involved. If the city was to build a fiber network, you'd be looking at a cost of over twenty-seven million dollars. And that's a big expense. I want to make sure that everyone was available of, you know, the value and the cost of what's involved here. We are not suggesting that the city should overbuild existing providers like Comcast, but we do want to make sure that you're aware of, you know, what's, what's entailed here. What we are suggesting, although let me back up a second. If there was a fiber network in the, in the city, it would probably add at least a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars to the tax base. Now, that's based upon the, the Fiber Broadband Association estimates that fiber adds five percent to the value of a house. In two thousand and sixteen, the Wall Street Journal estimated that it added three point one percent to the value. We based a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars on just a two percent increase. So if you took what your tax base is today, just on the residential side, and added two percent, it comes up to a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars, which is significant. We're suggesting you should take a look at either a municipal fiber network or potentially doing a betterment districts for certain neighborhoods who are interested in having fiber. Those are the two easiest ways and most painless ways to pay for something like this. As far as a municipal network is concerned, you'd be connecting the municipal buildings, the fire departments, the police departments, the schools. And again, what's involved there is the number of road miles and then the number of buildings that you're connecting. The interesting thing is putting fiber on the poles, the fiber itself is probably the least expensive part of the process. So instead of doing a sixteen-strand fiber, it'd just as easy to put a thirty-two-strand fiber or sixty-four-strand fiber. And once you have additional strands of fiber, that makes them available for local businesses or other applications, which can help bring down the cost of, of a fiber network. The best way to take a look at this to see if it's viable is to actually take a look at what you're paying today for, as far as your communications costs, your internet data, your, your voice services. In New Jersey, a few years ago, we found that most of the school districts, just by being able to convert from the eccentric services they had over to a fiber network, was able to pay for it. So there's different things that we can do to take, to, to help the city take a look at it. As far as residential betterment districts, those are normally used in Massachusetts for sewer and water projects for parts of the cities and towns that, you know, don't have city sewer or city, city water. It could be used for other purposes as well, including fiber or broadband. You, what I would suggest is taking a look at the residences, how they're zoned, breaking them into ten to twenty betterment districts of about a thousand to two thousand housing units apiece, and then leaving it up to the people in those fiber hoods, which Google has kind of coined the phrase, to see if they, this is something they'd be interested in. Because at some point, it's something that the residents would have to vote on anyways. And by breaking it into smaller chunks, you're able to find, okay, the people in this neighborhood really want it, and gives you the, the city the ability to experiment with something like this and see if it's successful. Again, and also by using the betterment districts, it gives you a way to pay for it as well. And with the newspaper people here, I kind of buried the lead. If certain fiber hoods decided that they did want to go ahead with this, Matrix Design Group believes in investing in what we know, and what we know is, is building fiber networks. I mentioned the town of Petersham. We are doing a public-private partnership with them, where we are paying to design, build, operate, and maintain the fiber network in that town at our own expense. We'd be willing to do the same in the city of Haverhill. The town, the city would be responsible for providing us the right-of-way on the utility poles, a place to house and power the network electronics, and also guarantee us a minimum of eight subscribers per mile. And just to touch on that last one, based upon three hundred and fifty miles, you have a density of about sixty-four housing units per mile. But if you take away, you know, Ward Hill, the industrial areas, you're probably looking at about eighty homes per mile or housing units per mile, which means you'd be looking at about a ten percent take rate. So one out of ten housing units would be able to support a fiber build in a net, in a neighborhood. The town of Concord or the city of Concord, they've decided to build their own fiber network, and right now, they have a take rate of about seventeen percent of the town or the city. They, they are growing every day, and they are, they have both Verizon files and Comcast in the city. And if, people have demand for, for these types of services, where they just want high-speed broadband via fiber. So again, we have a lot of, this is very early stages, and I know projects like this take a long, long time. We, we're very cognizant of that, but I did want to come here tonight and introduce myself. I apologize for the raspy voice. I'm at the tail end of a cold, and I'm, I'm happy to, to take any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Counselor Bevelacqua.
Yeah, again, as, as we did with the prior company, this was just an initial discussion. The, the, I would like to make a motion that this be referred to the Planning and Development Committee, and that we have tentatively set, if you agree to refer it, a meeting date of May twenty-second at six P. M. for the Planning Development Committee. At which time, there will be a much more detailed discussion, and it gives you also an opportunity to, to prepare any questions you may have and participate in the in-depth discussion and hear more of a presentation, learn more about the company, learn more about how this may be funded and timeline.
So there's a motion by Counselor Bevelacqua, and a second from Counselor Mason. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Counselor Barrett, did you want to speak?
I, I understand we are holding our questions till the, the other meeting. I'm fine with that.
I do, yeah, I do want to just make a couple of points.
I had a few, but-
Quick, quick points. So when I initially brought this forward, right, the, the goal was to, to go out there and try to learn as much as possible, and I appreciate- to learn as much as possible, and I appreciate Councilor Bevelacqua bringing you here tonight, because I think you have something to offer. I'll leave the recommendations on how to move forward to the Planning and Development Committee, but I see two different options. You know, one is, we could go out and hire a consultant to tell us, you know, what's the best approach. I'm not a big, I'm not a big fan of that, I know how that industry works, and, you know, they have templates, and they can just change the names of the prior city and get $75,000 for it. I'm not a big fan at all. As far as the federal government goes, they have a tool that they use called a request for information. The city doesn't have that, I checked with our purchasing agent. And the nice thing about the request for information is, instead of hiring a consultant, you go directly out to industry and see what they have. You get a temperature check. Before you even, before you even sit down to figure out what the best path is, you get all the data. This is, these are the different solutions that are basically possible out there. Now, we don't have a request for information tool, if you will, but we can send out an informal request for that same information from the city. So that would, I mean, that's one of the approaches that we could end up taking, as opposed to, you know, getting a consultant upfront. Let's just see what all the various, you know, next week, we may have somebody else that, you know, contacts us and wants to make a pitch. Well, let's just find out what all those potential solutions are, we'll have the data, and then I think we can make some good decisions.
I agree 100%, and I just want to reiterate that my being here tonight is really educational. I want to make sure that you're aware of some of the options that are out there.
Yes.
We've been doing this a long time, we want to also make sure that you're aware of the costs involved with this.
Yes.
And I agree 100% that you could hire a consultant, that would, you would pay a lot of money, and they would tell you that you're competing against the cable company, and this is what it's going to cost. Well, we could do that for you, for free.
Think you just did.
We did.
Yeah, yeah.
It always amazes me, but there's a lot of good money being made in consulting these days, because a lot of times, nobody steps up and says, here's what's involved with these type of projects.
Yes.
So again, I also wanted to mention that the municipal fiber and the residential fiber, it's not an either/or. The city could do one and not the other, or do both, or do nothing. I just want to make sure that you have the options put in front of you, so you know what courses that you'd be able to take.
Yeah, I think you had some really good ideas, based on your experience, that, you know, I think are viable.
Well, thank you.
Something that we need to look at. I think the biggest issue that we're going to have is, how do we pay to get started upfront? Right, obviously, we're not going to come up with $27 million, right, to do this. And then, secondly, what's the return on investment? So when you, when you give us a proposal, we'll take a look at, you know, what is that return on investment? If it's going to cost us, let's say, a few million dollars, you know, upfront, right, when will we get that back? And does that make sense? And I think we're going to find that, you know, it's pretty reasonable, but I don't know that for sure, that's why we need to do that.
I think you'll also find that the city already has a lot of resources in place, either the engineering department or the IT department, that have a lot of the answers to some of the questions or the data that needs to be collected. And the process is just knowing what questions to give them, to get the correct data, to plug into the right formulas.
Right, and so we would have to, we would have to have a, well, I don't want to make a recommendation, but in theory, the council and the mayor get together and come up with a strategy. That's really what we need to get it started.
Right, and I've given everybody my card, if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer, so...
Thank you, there are a couple councils that have comments, Councilor Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just wondering, Burlington, Vermont had a lot of issues with their, were you involved at the beginning, middle, and? It was a long saga.
We're very proud to say that we got involved in after the fact, because of all the work that we've done in Vermont. In addition to EC Fiber, which is a cooperative, that we designed and built the first nine towns, we actually operated that network for the first three years of its existence, and we handed over the operation to a company that was specifically set up for that. We also worked with the VTA, the Vermont Telecommunications Authority. We did all the engineering work for them for a network that they built. And because of all the work that we did, the folks in Burlington brought us in, it was the expansion of the four additional towns, which added millions of dollars of value to their recent sale, which helped get the city out of the mess that they were in.
Yeah, it cost them a lot of money, though, even then. Maintenance, is there a maintenance factor in all of this, as far as if we did it municipally or had an enterprise fund? Is it overwhelming for a community to do that?
No, it's not overwhelming, you'd probably be using local contractors. You know, it's not exactly a secret in our industry, that people like National Grid or Verizon, most of the work, they don't do themselves, they use contractors. You have a very qualified contractor in Mira, which is just over the border in Georgetown. There's also a number of other contractors. So you would contract that work out, just like any other work that the city would do. Also, it should be noted that even if we're the first person on the scene, we cannot touch a pole, say that gets hit by a car or something along those lines. The order of maintenance is electric first, then the phone, because those two companies own the poles, and then the people attached to the poles.
Okay, thank you, I look forward to this meeting, thank you.
Thank you very much, you know that there aren't any easy answers, right?
I know there aren't, that's why I asked the harder question.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Councilor, and Councilor Bevelacqua for the wrap-up.
Yes, and thank you to the council members for entertaining this discussion. Again, this was intended to be just a very brief overview. At the subcommittee meeting, or the committee meeting, I anticipate that we'll have much more detailed discussion, particularly that I'm going to be focused on in terms of financing, and I'm interested in what the company has to say relative to, they're doing the project at little or no cost to the city, as you mentioned, as being done in other communities. One thing that I was pleased to hear about, when I heard about this company, was their experience, the fact they've been in business, they've done projects that we can actually learn more about. And then ultimately, after the committee meeting, my anticipation is that we will in fact have a meeting with the mayor and the city council to discuss both companies, if those are the only two that come forward, or if we issue a request for proposals for other companies. So there's opportunities for us, but again, I think that the more, the more we learn, the more we hear, the more we understand the process, the better it will be for us if we decide to go forward with an alternative. So, again, I appreciate the council's endorsement of bringing this to the Planning and Development Committee. May 22, 6:00 PM, in the council office. And again, obviously, it's open to the public, and please be prepared with any questions or discussion.
Thank you very much, Councilor, and thank you for your presentation.
Again, thank you for time and consideration.
Thank you.
So mark that on your calendar, Chris.
Done.
Adam Clerk, next item, thanks.
Communication from Councilor Bevelacqua, requesting a discussion regarding sponsorship opportunities for city properties, sports teams, and academic clubs.
Councilor Bevelacqua.
Thank you. This is an item that I brought up, I think it may have been last year, I wanted to reintroduce this idea, because I think it has a great deal of merit. We're coming into the budget season, and as we know, every meeting, we talk about the fact that there never seems to be enough money in either one of the city budgets, whether it be the schools or the city at large. This is an opportunity, I think, to do two or three things. And I think about school buildings, classrooms within school buildings, particular usage within school buildings, such as libraries, or computer labs, or assembly areas, for example, as well as sports teams, as well as clubs and clubs, and as well as public buildings, public parks that are not yet sponsored by someone associated, for example, like with Brightside or other things. And I think what this does is does three things. This is an opportunity, I think, to seek out in an organized fashion donations from both the private sector and from the residents of our community. So let's say, for example, we have a high school graduate that is particularly fond of his high school homeroom. We would give him or her an opportunity to make a donation, and this would all be established by the school department and by the appropriate city department, to, in essence, donate X amount of dollars, and have maybe a plaque put over the door, somewhere associated with the room. What does it do? Well, collectively, what it would add revenue into the school department's budget, over and above what's approved. This would not be in place of what we approve, so in essence, when the mayor and the city council agree on the school department on a budget, this donation doesn't get subtracted from that total, but rather gets added, so it's an additional opportunity for the schools to have some additional revenue. Secondly, it connects the donor back to the school. So for example, we have high school graduates every year leaving Haverhill High School. This gives them another connection back to the high school, in terms of the fact that they've now donated, and they are now a donor, and have their name above a classroom, for example, or a laboratory, or a computer lab, whatever the case may be. The same thing is true of the athletic teams. You know, we've seen on the professional levels, that in fact, many private businesses are now donating sponsorship monies, to have their name affixed with the professional sport uniform. I think the same can be done with respect to our athletics. Thirdly, I watched the great, the best Santa Claus parade in the country is in Haverhill, and I've watched, I think it's Lendondary, New Hampshire's band come by every year, and there's a patch on their sleeve from a private business, which I don't know exactly how much they give, but I know that they contribute to helping that band become as good as it is. The other idea is to establish a dedication of opportunity for people that may want to participate in some type of donation, to again, either a school building, a small park, a public area, a classroom, or a specialized unit within one of our buildings. And what I would suggest is that this would, this would obviously take a little bit, not a lot, a little bit of work for a lot of value over the time. And what it would do is, we would create, in essence, an inventory of what may be available to have a sponsorship attached to it, and someone may not like the word sponsorship, you can use any word you like, but the idea is that we would attach a litany of opportunities that are available, what the cost is suggested, it may be a range, it may be a high number upfront, and what they would get in return. So in essence, to have your name, for example, this is, this building, for example, Haverhill City Hall, this particular room that we're in now is named after an individual, very worthy individual, but let's say, for example, it was not. And so there would be an opportunity to name this room for a donation, they get a plaque or whatever the department determines is going to be provided, and the idea is that we would have a connection back to the building, back to the individual, and would raise money. Is it going to raise a zillion dollars? Of course not. Will it raise some money? Absolutely. Will it connect people back to the building, back to the youth, back to the schools? Absolutely. Is it something that could be done in perpetual time? Absolutely. So I'd like to make a motion that we refer this request to the mayor and the school department, the mayor and school committee, school department, and the appropriate city departments, for a discussion with the appropriate committees, to begin discussion on making this happen. I think it's something that can happen relatively quickly, I think it doesn't hurt anyone, it doesn't harm anyone, and again, the benefit is the kids and the schools, the public at large, and again, it's something that's being done throughout the country, I think, and it's, there's opportunity for us to take advantage.
Second. Motion by Councilor Bevelacqua, and a second from Mr. Vice President and Councilor Masick.
I just want to comment that I think this is, it's time to probably revisit this, that's the way we ended up having Trinity. We had quite a push at one time for the stadiums, we had large, like banner-like areas on the seats, and for whatever reason, it's kind of faded, and I think there were things left that never got picked up for naming rights. So I support the idea of revisiting this, and I thank Councilor Bevelacqua for putting it on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and, well, let's just do it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Yes, we'll do them next. Madam Clerk, could you please move up, item 17.2?
Document 38Y, Communication from Councilor Masick, requesting to introduce...
I wanted to do, well, we have, we're both doing, I'm doing Common Grounds.
How about if we do two and three?
Yes.
One right after, because you got, I got simultaneous requests.
Oh my gosh.
I did. So let's do two quick, and then, and then three.
Communication from Councilor Masick, requesting to introduce Hope Davenport, WIC Director, to announce statewide WIC Day on May 2, 2019. This is continued from the April 23 meeting.
Councilor Masick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, while I originally was going to be doing the introduction for Hope Davenport, we have an even larger person in the room, the president and CEO of Community Action is here, John Cuneo, and I'm going to turn the mic over to John to make the proper introduction of Hope Davenport.
And your name and address for the record.
My name is John Cuneo, I live at 20 Hyatt Avenue in Haverhill.
Welcome.
Thank you. With that kind of an intro, I don't know, Bill.
You can do a joint. Larger person.
So, like my predecessor a little bit earlier, I want to thank you for the time and attention that you're offering to us, the opportunity to speak with you. And I want to thank Bill for introducing me, and also for having Hope on our open-mic show, courtesy of WHAV, which I'd like to thank, but he's gone. So, at any rate, Community Action, as you know, has many programs, a number of them concern early childhood, and WIC is among the largest in terms of both the numbers of people we serve and the geography that we serve. And it is also super important, as we've learned about brain science and the importance of brain science, and the common wisdom of you are what you eat. So, I am really privileged to introduce Hope Davenport, she is our WIC Director, and we have some good news to tell you about, so, Hope, it's up to you.
Thank you. And your name and address for the record.
It's Hope Davenport, excuse me, my voice is cracking, 27 Lisa Lane, Georgetown, Massachusetts. And thank you, John, for introducing, and thank you, Bill, for inviting us, and we've had a big week. I've been directing the WIC program here in Haverhill for 15 years. It's a premier health and nutrition program for low-income women and infants and children under five. And the program, like I said, is the premier nutrition program nationwide. So it was established in 1975 in every state, and here in the Northern Essex, we're serving through Community Action approximately 2,600 individuals now, 2,500, 2,600 individuals, and that's out of our four sites. So, what do we provide? We provide nutrition education, so we have qualified nutritionists on staff, we're educating young families, the pregnant women, as soon as they find out they're pregnant, and if they're eligible. And the families with infants and children under five, if they're income-eligible, our income guidelines are in the back of your handout. So they're 185% of federal poverty level, that's our income guideline. And so for those families who are eligible, they're eligible to come in, receive nutrition education from our nutritionist, we provide free food. So they leave the WIC office with an electronic card that they can use right at our local grocery stores. Most, all of our families benefit from shopping at all the market baskets we have, as well as some small stores as well. So, they're shopping for a variety of healthy foods. They're getting approximately $60 to $80 a month in healthy foods for each child or each woman, or if an infant needs formula, it's $100, almost $100 a month in infant formula. WIC was established mainly to prevent iron-deficient anemia that was found back in the 70s with many low-income infants and children, and so we do a great job at just preventing iron deficiency, poor nutrition, and getting kids ready for school. So, WIC ends at 5, in hopes that they go on to the public school and receive good nutrition services at the public school. What else would you like to know? So I have the handout here, and we, our funding is primarily federal-funded, the $617,000 is primarily USDA federal funds, with about 20 to 30% of that is state funds. And this funding comes through the Department... funding comes through the Department of Public Health and is contracted with Community Action to provide the service. We, we have a lot of positive health outcomes. So the second page in the handout kind of highlights some of the performance measures that we keep track of. We measure healthy weight in children, and we've increased the number of children that are at healthy weight over the last few years and are now above the state average for kids at a healthy weight. We promote and support breastfeeding moms, and our breastfeeding rates have been increasing, and our support for those moms has actually been recognized nationally. We just won a gold premier award for our excellent breastfeeding services and our breastfeeding rates. Let's see. I'd love to answer questions.
Yes.
If you have any. And, yeah, I'd like to be as brief as possible. I had the pleasure of talking on the radio show for quite a while, going into details about our service and our program. But if people have questions, I'm happy to answer that. I also want to highlight our special event. So our special event is this Thursday, between nine-thirty and eleven. We're inviting community partners. We have our partners in the community, as well as, so pediatricians have been invited, our partners that we refer families to. So for other services that families need help with, so we've invited Mass Health and Navigator representative, we've invited Haverhill Public Library. Providers can come and learn about the program on this Thursday at three Washington Square at Community Action. It's a day of celebration. It is a statewide WIC Day, and we're opening the doors as an open house. People can, families are invited to come between eleven and one for refreshments and to really learn about the services at Community Action and in our community. So we're excited. It's the first, first annual. And if I can answer any questions?
Yes. Thank you very much. And Counselor Maisick.
I would defer to any of my colleagues. I just wanted to be able to do the wrap-up.
Okay, let's, let's do it that way. Yeah.
I would like to also just ask Hope to mention your participation with the farmer's market.
Yes. So every summer, we have a farmer's market program where we distribute farmer's market coupons for all our families enrolled that have either a four-a-month or older infant and/or children, or the pregnant women, receive twenty-five dollars to spend at the farmer's markets, certified farmer's markets. So of course, Haverhill is one. And they, we do that special event. We're holding it the first Saturday in August, and we go to the farmer's market. So families meet us there, they get their coupons, and they shop for their fruits and vegetables at the farmer's market. We've been doing that for as many years as I can remember, and last year, there was over four-hundred thousand dollars distributed and spent on fruits and vegetables statewide. Great program.
We'll go back to Counselor Maisick for the wrap-up. Counsel Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hope, it seems like you're, you know, looking at these statistics. It looks like you're doing great with lowering BMI of children, which is important for a healthy life. But how many, of the two-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-eight people that you see, you service, how many are from Haverhill? From the, because you have four sites you're...
So out of Haverhill, we're serving approximately sixteen-hundred.
Okay, so that's a big question.
From that number.
Yeah.
Yeah. Fifteen to sixteen-hundred in just Haverhill.
And when you have that party on Thurs, this Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
So two days from now?
Yeah.
What time is that, if people that want to, that might be interested, that might be eligible for this?
So this Thursday, from eleven AM to one PM.
Okay.
Our doors will be open.
All right. Great.
For people to come by.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, and this obviously is a very worthy cause, and it must be very fulfilling to be able to help people that obviously need some very basic help.
Growing, starting families, yes. And we're always, so as far as that number goes, it says we're serving forty, well, here in our program, we're serving thirty-two percent of all infants born in our area. So, however, that's still only roughly seventy, seventy to eighty percent of people who are eligible. So we're always trying to outreach and educate people to know that we're there to help, because there's always, there's always people out there who are eligible, and they just don't know about us. And so...
Hopefully, this will help get the word out.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counsel Maisick.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. President. Hope, I want to thank you for taking the time to come in this evening and speak before the council. I know that what your effort is, is to also get the word out, because even though you're serving a large number of children, I know you'd like to have that be a hundred percent if possible, which is next to impossible, but to grow the number that you're providing service to, because people aren't knowledgeable, and we spoke about this, that a lot of people aren't aware of the, of the service that is available. So hopefully, this will help, and I expect that it will. And I want to thank you. I want to thank John for coming in, for your introduction tonight, and I'll probably see you on Thursday. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, and thank you very much. And Madam Clerk, next item.
Seventeen-three.
Seventeen-three.
Petition from Common Ground Ministries to use a portion of city-owned parking lot on Locke Street to sell furniture Saturdays, May fourth through October fifth, twenty nineteen, and also to sell on exterior property at one-ninety-four Winter Street. This is continued from April twenty-third, and updated information is included.
Counsel Daly O'Brien, did you want to speak first, or...
What I wanted to say was, I think the gentleman left after we did the previous item, thinking maybe it was the, I'm not sure. So that's what makes me concerned. But I know that what our concerns were when it first came before us, and I believe their updated letter.
Yes.
Satisfies that. So even though they're not here, I would like to go ahead and propose that we do let them start using the lot on Locke Street beginning May fourth, because it would be this Saturday, and they'll do that through October fifth. And in their updated letter, they explain exactly what spots, it's approximately fifteen parking spaces in the Locke Street lot on the front side of the building. So it's the same activity that they've done in the past, but now they've moved, and I think we should give them an opportunity to do this.
I would second that motion.
Motion by Counsel Daly O'Brien, and a second from Counsel Maisick. Counsel Maisick.
I just want to say that, you know, they did this last year, and I know that they've made some adjustments, but there were no problems. They've also provided us with photos and certificate of liability insurance, and I fully support this. I know Ron Mills was here, but he, for whatever reason, had to leave. But I agree with you, Counselor Daly O'Brien, that we should hopefully move to pass this.
Expedia.
So that they can start this weekend. And maybe we could also ask that our administrative assistant reach out to Ron to let him know what we did.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counsel Sullivan.
Yes.
Counsel Bevelacqua.
Yes.
Counsel Barrett.
Yes.
Counsel Jordan.
Yes.
Counsel Maisick.
Yes.
Counsel Daly O'Brien.
Yes.
President Mitchison.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, two absents.
And that passes, and now we go back to seventeen-one.
Document thirty-F, Counsel Bevelacqua submits minutes and recommendations of the Planning and Development Committee meeting held on March twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen. Document thirty-eight-G, Broadband. This is continued from April twenty-third meeting for broadband discussion.
Counsel Bevelacqua.
We discussed this at the last meeting. We continued it because we had a presentation tonight, and I think now this is able to be accepted, because we've now continued this discussion for the Planning and Development Committee to meet again on March twenty-second. So I move that these be accepted, placed on file.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Bevelacqua, and a second from Counsel Maisick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes?
May I just also add that, in terms of the discussion regarding the Haverhill Public Library, there are some recommendations that were contained in the letter, in the minutes, as we noted at the last meeting. Several of those have been carried out, and we sent the communication to the city solicitor to further review the discussion relative to usage of space.
Thank you very much for that update. And Madam Clerk, I guess we're on eighteen-one?
Correct. Counselor Melinda Barrett submits minutes, attached minutes and recommendations of the Administration Finance Committee meeting held on April seventeenth, twenty nineteen for acceptance and discussion. Items discussed were document twenty-six E slash sixteen, City of Haverhill, Mayor's Recommendation Capital Improvement Plan Program twenty-sixteen dash, twenty-sixteen to twenty-twenty, and document thirteen-Y, Revenue Funds Received from Licensed Marijuana Establishments.
Counsel Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. President. The meeting was held April seventeenth. The committee members were myself, Counselor Maisick, Counselor Daly O'Brien, and Counselor Mitchison was also attended. The committee chair, Colin LaPage, was absent. Department heads, Chief LeLiberty, Deputy Chief Haw, Steve Cuzzo, the purchasing agent. Also in attendance was Scott Zaminsky from the Haverhill Police Department, Frank Garofalo, Aaron Kim from Garofalo Design Associates. Document one, document two-six E one-six, City of Haverhill Mayor's Recommendations for Capital Improvements, as presented by department heads. Police, Animal Control Council, Deputy Haw reminded the committee of the situation with the close-to-uninhabited animal control shelter. The building was built in nineteen seventy-three. It is a corrugated metal and wood construction on cement slab. The area is adjacent to the DPW yard, the city fuel depot, and Little River. He reminded counselors the issues of rat infestation, water infiltration from both ground and roof, inadequate climate control, mold, sewage, and structural issues have been discussed at length over the past two and a half years. The deputy presented a file of photos that showed some of these issues, which is, which are attached to the file. We, he was unable to duplicate the odor that permeates the building due to the dead rats trapped in the walls of the building. Deputy Chief then introduced the architect Frank Garofalo and his associate Aaron Kim. They presented the proposed plans for the replacement of the animal control building. The building would be in a different location to allow for the current building to be used while construction was done. This will save significant money and manpower, as the animals in the city custody will not have to be farmed out to distant communities at expense. It would be slightly larger, at eighteen-hundred square feet, and made of concrete construction to avoid infestation and provide longer durability. Have secure food holding areas, easy cleaning pens, and no areas for vermin to take root. The buildings would be slightly bigger with runs adjacent to the kennels for ease of outdoor access and cleaning. The plans for the new building also include improvements to the city gas pumps, roadway, parking, and accommodates conservation requirements. The cost of the new construction improvements to the adjacent area is approximately one-million-eight-hundred-thousand dollars. Construction timeline would be twelve months. A motion was made by Counsel Maisick and seconded by Counsel Daly O'Brien for the council to unanimously support the proposed building by requesting the council to ask the mayor to move forward with construction in two thousand and nineteen, with bonding considered as a funding source. This motion passed three-zero. The fire department. Fire Chief LeLiberty was pleased that some large items have been taken care of on his department's capital list. The department was able to secure new portable radios to replace obsolete models. They are also finishing the installation of generators into every station other than Water Street. They are still awaiting a potential grant monies for the station's generator. This will keep all but Water Street online and available to service residents during power outages. The chief still had critical items on the department's capital improvement list. He thinks the most critical would be the rescue truck replacement, an engine pumper, an engine slash pumper replacement, and a facilities assessment of all the stations to address stations' physical plants. He informed that the rescue truck is old. It was purchased as a stopgap from a neighboring community. It is very near the end of its serviceable life. It carries critical rescue equipment that other vehicles are not equipped to carry. A replacement rescue would cost an estimated seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. The engine slash pumper would replace a nineteen-year-old KME, which is also near the end of its life. The chief suggested multiple alternative ways to finance from bonding to lease to own. The building assessment, new OSHA state standards make an assessment even more critical as the requirements are becoming more stringent. The cost of the assessment would be one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars and would have the city in a better position to act if any deficiencies are found to be critical. The chief presented the RFP request for all. A motion was made by Counsel Maisick and seconded by Counsel Daly O'Brien to recommend that the full council, that the letter be sent to the mayor, asking him to include funding of a rescue truck, engine slash pumper, and facilities assessments during the upcoming budget. The motion was passed three-zero. City Hall. Purchasing agent Steve Cuzzo presented an assessment from three consulting firms regarding city hall interior, exterior, and systems. The overall repairs would be estimated to cost over seven million dollars. The issues were broken down into a five-year plan with urgent structural and water infiltration repairs being tackled first. The cost of the urgent structural and water infiltration repairs was estimated to be eight-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand dollars. This presentation did not include the repair and replacement of the retaining wall behind City Hall. Oh, this wall was implicated in some of the water infiltration issues in the basement of City Hall. A motion was made by Counsel Maisick and seconded by Counsel Daly O'Brien that the committee recommends the full support of the council to ask the mayor and to do whatever he deems appropriate to address the critical needs of City Hall. That motion passed three-zero. The school department, the committee received documents, which are included in this packet, from Superintendent Marotta that included both capital and general facilities improvements for the school system's physical plant. The item was not discussed, as representatives were not available. The item was tabled. And the second document was a communication from Counsel LaPage to discuss accounting for revenue funds received from licensed medical, excuse me, licensed marijuana establishments and their allocations to mitigate costs and impacts to the city. This item was tabled until availability of appropriate personnel. I move that these minutes be accepted and placed in file.
Second. Motion by Counsel Barrett, and a second from Mr. Vice President. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That passes.
Mr. President, can I make a motion that we send a letter to the mayor in regards to some of the recommendations made by the committee?
Motion by Counsel Barrett, and a second from Counsel Maisick. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counsel Sullivan.
Yes.
Counsel Bevelacqua.
Yes.
Counsel Barrett.
Yes.
Counsel Jordan.
Yes.
Counsel Maisick.
Yes.
Counsel Daly O'Brien.
Yes.
President Mitchison.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, two absents.
And that passes. Are there any committee reports or announcements?
Move or adjourn.
Motion to adjourn from Mr. Vice President, and a second from Counsel Daly O'Brien. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned.